If not, stays a stand. Okay, now, item five, public comment. This is a time where we allow spokespersons to bring anything before the commissioners of the committee, commissioners' body and, um, is there anyone? Okay, next item is consideration of petitions memorial and remonstrances.
Item six A, D.N. Gillan, Executive Director of Beef Empire Days, requests governing bodies' consideration and approval to waive the daily fee and deposit for the carnival, which is May fifteenth through May twenty-fourth. These are all in conjunction with the Beef Empire Days events. There were several requests in the attachment that you have, however, these are the only two which require commission action. Staff recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carry.
Item six B, it's my pleasure to announce and recognize the graduating class of the Citizens Academy, and I'll read off their names, and if any of them are in attendance, they're welcome to come up and join you, Mayor, for their picture. And along with Ashley, if Ashley can join, because she's the one that puts the academy together and coordinates all the staff, that does the presentations, and she's done that for several years, and does a good job. We appreciate her efforts. This year's graduating class, Anthony Cruz, Terry Gonzalez, Grace Juarez, Haley Neer, Ruth Dunlap, Blair Hollingsworth, Stephanie Juarez, Chelsea Perez, Maggie Gilmore, Johnny Janda, Trevor Martin, and Trudy Tanner. Any of those folks?
Yes. Right ladies. (laughing).
And we, there is a brief slideshow of photos.
And is it on this?
On that, the PowerPoint.
All right.
I just started it, sure, on itself. Okay. Slide two.
Slideshow from beginning to end. All right, so.
Do you have your kids?
(laughing). We need to move this.
How much that company?
You'll be able to move that round?
You're, you're tougher.
I'm closer than you.
(laughing).
See that?
One, two. Take it another way. Couple.
All right.[185.78][185.78](applause). Ashley, anything you wanted to share about the class, or when our next anticipated class will be?
Um, the class is about an eight-week course. This year it ran from the beginning of March to, last week was our graduation. It gives residents a behind-the-scenes look at all of the different departments, what they do, they get to actually go to a lot of the different locations. We got to check out the control tower in the airport, which is all that photos of. And that was one of the highlights of the trip, along with a behind-the-scenes tour of the zoo, which is always a highlight as well. The next class will be in the spring, and anybody who's interesting can, interested, whether you're interested or not, if you're interested, you can contact the city manager for more information. That's the last one.
Thank you.
Impeccable timing on that.
Yes.
Two slides came up on cue and it was over as soon as it stopped talking.
She timed it that way on purpose.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ashley. Grace Bible Church requests governing body consideration and approval for annexation of their property located at 2595 Jenny Barker Road, and serviced by all city utilities. In your packet you have a memo from Steve, and I would say Steve, or Mike, either one can speak, or Caleb, to the nature of this annexation.
Well, you have the staff report there in your packet of the alternatives there. This, if the property is a church, that's there, and so the alternatives that are available is the government by major staff to prepare the annexation agreement with the church for some time in the future, an authorized connection to the water system, or the government by major staff to proceed with the annexation process, whether or without addressing the city's remnant parcel, and the government by may defer action to a later date. Staff recommends the authorizing of the staff to negotiate the annexation agreement with them on that property. This would be an island annexation, um, as well, as you can see the property, where it's located, and eventually we'll connect all of these islands together, but I think at this point they're needing access to some of those needed city utilities for water, so.
The red lines are?
The red lines is that they're property, but is their, their property other than the piece of the city?
Right, but the rest of the edges here are also near the city limits?
Yeah, this is not the, for the.
What about Jenny Barker Road? That, right now, is still county, but it seemed that Jenny Parker Road was on this sort of inevitable trajectory to be a city road. Does it make sense to go ahead and, yeah, let's see, let's read.
Yeah, right now we have the, the current city limit lines is here, there's an island here.
Oh, that's right, that already exists as an island annexation.
Yeah, so this would be, in order to actually connect the two islands that we currently have with the other island that's over here, which is Chapel Heights, which Chapel Heights, oh, it does own this piece here around, um, and, and dip down a little further is where the road cuts off, that is, was just recently annexed into the city limits of the property. Eventually, the only way we can tie in these islands is to annex, because of the annexation laws, is to connect them to the current city limit lines, not to another island, so this would be considered another island without necessarily the right of ways being annexed at this time, so. But it, it does make sense to, to, to work with them to have an annexation and help provide services that they can't proceed out in the county at this time, so.
Where do they currently get water? Are they septic on wastewater?
I believe they're septic and well, and there's, different areas in the county have different issues with their water.
Uh, and this is sort of in that same?
Yes.
Corridor of underperforming wells, quality and quantity wise?
Yes. So, uh, so I think working with them to go ahead and annex, or, or do it via annexation agreement, either direction would be acceptable.
So they're, so in the future, when they're tying everything in, would they, they would have to pay for the connections for the water sewer?
They would, they would be required to pay for the connection to the water system, and of course, that's what they want right away. The electric, the city already serves that property with electric. Sanitary sewer, at the present time, is, is considerable ways away, so it's going to be very expensive for them, and I believe that as long as their septic system currently works, they can continue to use it, but if it should fail, then they're, they have to connect to the city's sanitary sewer system.
But they're the ones paying to?
Yes.
Get the water, the line and everything?
Yes, and water is actually just across the street.
Right, across the street.
At the hotel, so, that's a, you can't get much closer than that for water.
Yeah.
That's, you know, part of the incentive, I think, for them to want to do that, is to have a good water supply.
Okay. So if we were to annex that, would it be, this would be a good time to do that little remnant?
Well, I, I think that's something that could be discussed, we, the city does own that piece of property, because the street, the, uh, realignment, you have the small piece on that side that is really, uh, the, the uses for that are quite limited, but it would be something to discuss in the future on that piece of property. I think that's something you could take up at a later time, is the discussion of what to do with that piece of property. I think right now, the more important part would be to go ahead and either proceed with an annexation agreement, or go ahead and proceed with the, they've requested annexation. It would be, if it's an island annexation, it's a two-part process where we would, you would give the go-ahead that, yes, you're interested in, with their request to annex in, it would then go to the county commission, they would prove it, come back to you for final authorization.
Madam Mayor, I'd move to author our staff to move forward with negotiation of annexation here.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carry.
Yeah.
Item seven A, under report of the city manager, Public Works Director current, who actually unexpectedly isn't here today, so I will just briefly go over his report on his behalf. He provided in your packet the quantity results from the spring cleanup, and so you can see that our collection is an increase over last year's cleanup, actually by some considerable percentages, which is interesting because, I would just say, from my own observation, it didn't seem like there was nearly as much stuff out on the, on the side of the road, but it's a big city, so there must have been some stuff in places I wasn't, so. If you have any questions on that, on this report, or the cleanup in general, we'd be happy to try to answer those. Hearing none, we'll move on. The, item seven B is just our normal correspondence from Cox Communications. Item seven C, Fire Chief Shelton is here, and will give you an update of the county commission's discussion yesterday regarding fireworks. Chief?
Thank you very much. Yesterday I spoke with the county commission. Each year I have to talk with them in reference to the sale and discharge of fireworks in Finney County, the same as I have to come to you and talk about the discharge of fireworks inside the city limits. And I spoke with them yesterday, I had, prior to that meeting, I had talked with Chief Hawkins, and every year when the fireworks go on sale on the twenty-seventh through the fifth, people begin to discharge fireworks on the twenty-seventh as soon as they go on sale. The state of Kansas allows fireworks to be sold from the twenty-seventh through the fifth. After talking with Chief Hawkins, I did talk to the commission about possibly allowing fireworks to be discharged from twenty-seventh through the, through the fifth, because they're already discharging them once they go on sale. And that's what I'm going to ask you, and we will bring that to you in two weeks, but we have allowed the discharge of fireworks at the third, fourth, and fifth inside the city limits, and since they go on sale on the twenty-seventh, it would make more sense to go ahead and allow the discharge of fireworks starting on the twenty-seventh, because it would save the, the police departments from work going out, it's, it's really, it turns into more of a noise problem than it does a fire problem. Last year we had zero fires related to fireworks from the twenty-seventh through the fifth. Our experience over the last two or three years, it's, it's really dropped off since we've allowed them to move into the city and discharge the fireworks, because we have a lot of concrete, green grass, and garden hoses. So, that was my conversation, basically, with the county commission yesterday, and they are going to hold off on approving what they will do this year with whatever you decide.
So you need kind of direction to?
Well, we'll bring it to you in, in two weeks, in a little different form, so.
Go ahead.
You'll have two choices. You can either, you can either keep, stay with the third, fourth, and fifth, or if you would like to, go ahead and allow fireworks to be just discharged between the twenty-seventh and the fifth. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Is there, is there a reason why we can't, not sell them until the third?
I'm sure we could, it'd be up to the county, yeah, if they decided they did want them.
But that, that would solve the entire problem right there. If they can't buy them, they can't discharge them unless they go out of county. If you, if you allow them to buy them, guess what? It's kind of hard to tell them you can't do it till the third.
Whatever, whatever decisions are made is what we will do for you, but, but yes, you, you could, the county could restrict them between the third and, and, between the third and the fifth.
Right now, the city of Garden City doesn't allow for the sale inside the city limits at all.
Right.
So, when they're sold, how they're sold, at this point, is the purview of the county commission, so, um, your responsibility is to determine when they can be discharged, whether, regardless of where somebody buys them, they could buy them in Missouri, they could buy them in Kearney County, so the county commission can decide whether or not folks buy them from the twenty-seventh to the fifth, or just buy them from the third to the fifth. You still have to make the decision of when they get discharged, and people aren't bound, Finney County residents aren't bound to buy fireworks in Finney County, they can buy them anywhere. So, they're, they're two distinctly different decisions, county for out in the county, plus when the sale occurs, us inside the limit, city limits, for the discharge of that. I think the, the incongruence between when they can be purchased and when they can be discharged is one that maybe the police department can speak to, and that, if those were aligned in Finney County, between the city and Garden City for a period of time less than what state law allows in other counties, would help a little bit, but we're still going to have the problem we have now, which is not, you know, almost this appear, this appearance of a, of an entrapment situation, where, yeah, you can go buy stuff that is legal to explode, and then people go explode it, and you go write them a ticket, you say, well, not yet. You gotta wait five days. So, uh, that's, I, I think one of the interests of the police department is to align when the county sells it with, and when the city discharges it with what's provided for in the state law, that all three of those things align. At the very least, aligning in the city and county would help, and if that's going to be a shorter period of time than what state law allows, we're better off than we were last year.
It could be somewhere between the twenty-seventh and the.
You've got the ability to do whatever you want to do in that respect, so.
I understand what you said, and I understand that, that, that we don't control when the sale dates occur in the county, but I also know they, they do read the paper, so if they understood that I brought up a question, maybe they would reconsider to sell it at a, at a different time.
Maybe they would.
That was my point.
What we experienced in the past, though, a few years ago, we did ban fireworks in Finney County, and they continued to sell them in counties around Finney County, and people did purchase them from other counties and bring them back in, so, uh, we can't stop people from selling them starting on the twenty-seventh, even if we restrict them in Finney County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe item seven D, City Attorney Grissell wishes to go over the recent state attorney general opinion, which we attached in the packet regarding use of private email.
Yeah, I want to, want to talk to you for a couple minutes about the AG opinion, which was issued last week, and discuss the basics of that opinion, and then give you my opinion, because it, it differs from the AG's opinion. The AG opinion issued last week dealt with Kansas Open Records Act, and essentially what the, the opinion said was that state employees, and I include in that group elected officials, who use a private device, private email, private cellphone, send messages over that private device, and they're not using public resources, that any record created through that device is not an open record. So, simply what they're saying is that a state employee or a public official doing public work on their private email account, sending that email to whomever, that the record that's created by that email is not an open record, therefore is subject to a court or request. In the first part of the AG opinion, they indicate that the act is to be liberally construed, and I think at that point then they lost that, that portion of the law, and failed to comply with that directive, which is set out in the first part of the, of Cora. I have a different opinion. An AG opinion is a, is advisory only, it's not like a court decision, so you don't have to follow it, and it's going to be my, my recommendation that you do not. I think that the spirit of Cora, a liberal interpretation of Cora has been misconstrued by the AG. My opinion to do, to you is, if you're using a public, or a private device, your private email account, or your cellphone, you're sending texts, and that's not provided by the city, that if you're doing public work, you know, corresponding with Mr. Allen or, or another elected official, that you consider whatever product is, is created by that to be an open record. I, I think that this AG opinion at some point is going to be challenged in court, and I can see the, the outcome being that, that those in fact are open records and not, not private records, so. My advice is to you, to you, create a private device like it's a public device, and consider anything that you produce to be an open record. This doesn't address, or it doesn't have anything to do with coma, but certainly using a private device and, and doing public work doesn't in any fashion get you outside of Kansas Open Meetings Act, so you couldn't, because you're using your private cellphone or your private email account, get three of you together and, and do city business, you can't do that. So it doesn't have anything to do with that at all. I would imagine that there'll be discussion about this, this AG opinion with city attorneys over the next few months, and might even be a court case, but I'm going to be conservative in my approach to dealing with this issue, and my advice to you as elected officials is to also act in a conservative manner.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
Staff's included the monthly sales tax report, and the trend continues to be a positive one. There's some meetings in note. I don't think any of those require RSVPs through Selim. If you are so inclined, the appropriate motion for eight A would be to approve the ordinance number twenty-three eighty-seven dash twenty-fifteen A.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the appropriation ordinance number twenty-three eighty-seven dash twenty-fifteen A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nay, motion carry.
Item nine A, which if approved would be ordinance number twenty-six ninety-six dash two thousand fifteen, amends zoning regulations to permit funeral homes in the C-three district. Caleb? Or Carol?
(laughing).
Okay, you have the memo in your packet. It has come to the attention of staff that we do not currently allow funeral homes in the central business district, however, we do have two homes, funeral homes in the central business, business district right now. They're both non-conforming. This amendment that is presented to you today would amend the C-three regulations to allow them to exist. The amendment consists of adding a definition, which we do not have, and also to allow funeral homes as a permitted use. This amendment was presented to the planning commission on, let's see, April sixteenth. They recommended approval with a vote of eight to zero, and, and staff also recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you.
They're allowed in others, something C-two or whatever.
Yes, C-two. And they, probably both of them have been there before zoning was established. Yes. Okay.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-six ninety-six dash twenty-fifteen.
There's a motion by Commissioner Sessna, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carry.
Item nine B, the governing bodies asked to consider and move forward with the investment grade audit results that include street light retrofits and other energy-saving facility improvement measures to the city's facilities by Siemens Industry, Inc. If you choose to move forward, the appropriate motion would be to approve resolution number twenty-six thirty dash two thousand fifteen. I will tell you that while Commissioner Fankhouser is not in attendance and unable to vote on the, the matter, he did express his interest that any efficiency efforts that we explored have a projected financial payback of under five years, that was his opinion, he asked me to share that with the commission. Mike?
Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to introduce first the two gentlemen here from Siemens Industries, Chris Christensen and Rob Sullivan. And should you have questions that I'm sure I can answer, they're going to, they're going to bail me out here, but, just a quick overview, you know, we've looked at some sort of energy conservation program many times over the last four years, to determine what can we do in the city to conserve energy in our facilities, with our street lights. We've gone through three different audits, the, in two thousand thirteen, the city commission authorized us to send out requests for qualifications for the top, for five of the energy conservation industry folks that do that. We had a committee set up, and Mr. Fankhouser sent on that committee with us. It was determined that Siemens Industry was selected to do the next step, and what they have done is they have completed the investment grade audit, and as they've come in and they've done their due diligence, they looked at all of the facilities, they looked at all of the numbers, they have determined that there definitely is a payback, and there definitely is a savings for the city. They guarantee this number, the number that they project that we would save over the course of ten years is three point, was that correct? Fifteen years is one point nine seven three million over fifteen. Go ahead, hold on, let. Okay, sorry, I need to make sure, I didn't see that. I'll let him talk about the financial stuff in just one second. But I'll just kind of go on a little bit. What this includes, it would be the retrofitting of all of the streetlights, the overhead streetlights in Garden City, to LED lights. It includes the lighting on Tally Trail, that was brought up recently by the commission, some security issues there and the low lighting. It includes some weatherization, you know, city hall, the airports, and the airport buildings, wastewater water, golf, traffic and recycling facilities, some buildings at the zoo, some recreation facilities, there's new programmable thermostats that will be installed, there are the lighting inside the facilities will be changed with more energy-efficient ballasts and bulbs. The biggest saving obviously comes from the, the streetlights within the city, that, right now, that we pay, through our wholesale power contracts, we pay energy to light those lights up, and we anticipate a savings of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year alone on the streetlights, which is substantial. The, also included in this, we'll be looking at the entry coming into city hall, there's some pretty sufficient, I see it's really not weatherized very good on the outside set of doors, so we're going to be looking at making some changes to that, should you approve this. And then it also ties in with our, recently we did the, approved the Integrated Resource Plan that we had to send to the Western Area Power Administration to continue to receive their federal power, and if you remember right, that was a very long-term agreement, clear out to two thousand fifty-three, I believe. Part of that plan was that we agreed to do some type of energy conservation, it doesn't have to be this, but we had to do some kind to show that we're doing our part to conserve energy. This, this particular proposal fits that requirement for the Western Area Power Administration. And with that, I'll turn it over to the, the smarter guys that, that can take all the numbers. We did, they worked with Melinda on finance, we've come up with an excellent financing program on this, two and a half percent interest. program on this, two and a half percent interest, and.
Great. Thank you.
It was, you're right, Mike. Sorry, I wanted to verify the numbers were correct. It is about $3 million in savings over the period of the contract, which is 10 years. So, just to give you a little brief history, Mike had put us to the challenge to make sure that we fall within city guidelines of typical standard construction projects, which was 10 years. He wanted to see that. Typically, I can tell you from experience, when we do these projects, sometimes they're 15 and 20 years. State statute does allow you to go up to 30 years. So we were challenged with making sure that we bring this under 10 years, including having that with financing with Melinda and working with our financing partners to make sure we got to the best possible rate. So, we took the challenge very seriously. It took us a lot longer, anticipated because of the challenge in front of us, but we did meet the goals that the city has had for, Mike has had for us. It is a very nice project. It does provide a lot of benefit to Mike and his budget as well as long-term benefit to the city.
And it showed that it's budget neutral, so we aren't, I mean, there's an expense, but can you kind of explain that?
Sure.
I noticed it said budget neutral.
Sure. He currently is paying X amount of dollars for energy. So with the retrofit projects, because you're going to take energy savings conservation measures, you're going to actually get enhanced energy savings. So if you take a 100-watt bulb and we put in a 60-watt bulb, you've got a monetary dollar associated with that. So because of that money, because he'll be using less kilowatts, I think it was 1.5 million less kilowatts a year, we're taking that money that he otherwise would have been paying it and using it to provide capital improvements for the project. So it's budget neutral. It does not affect where he has to come this year and say, I need more money to pay for this. So it remains flat for 10 years. Then after 10 years, the warranty is still in effect with the bulbs. He will continue to see positive cash flow from that, so at year 10, you'll see that exponentially rise where he'll have a lot more money in his budgets.
Okay.
Some of these are simple payback less years, and Buffalo Dune's 22.7, but I'm looking at this summary of facility improvement measures. This is everything summarized, and what you would do and the savings. So is it just Buffalo Dune's is a small building? Is that one of the reasons why it might be higher? Just less opportunity for savings there?
I want to make sure I answer this correctly, but.
And what page of the document are we looking at?
Eight, nine?
Eight and nine.
The particular facilities are, Buffalo Dune, Gulfport?
Yeah, just because it's, you know, 22.7.
Correct.
Well, you look over the water department, I guess it's 32.1, and athletic field, 81.1.
Correct. The intent is to be comprehensive and fit within the 10-year criteria of the project. You went ahead and left it in so that we're not giving you a mix of older and newer technologies in your facilities. So yeah, it's one of the benefits of this particular approach to doing a project is we can pull in some of the longer-term items. If you look through the body of the report, there were a lot of things unfortunately that we actually had to exclude from the project. Some of the air conditioning retrofits, et cetera, some of those items, the paybacks on those were long enough and the upfront expense high enough that they simply didn't make the cut to make it into the final project.
So with this proposal, then the overall comes up to the 10-year goal.
Correct.
How is the lighting going to affect the safety in the city on the streets?
Actually, this lighting will actually, it should increase the safety. It's actually a much brighter, clearer light, where you typically see orange or yellowish type lights out there. This is actually a very brisk, clear light. To show you what our intent and our plan is, on May 21st, we are scheduled to install a sample of the lights, and we talked about putting it out towards the drive, towards Walmart. So between the council meeting will allow time for you all to gather to make sure that it meets the expectations of the council as well as the citizens of the community. They'll get a chance to look at it and comment on it. Our big concern is to make sure that public safety is aware of it so they can drive and make sure that we're meeting the public safety expectations as well as. So everybody will have their chance before we actually purchase the lights. We're only doing a random sample at this point to make sure that everybody's headed in the same path and direction. If it doesn't meet the standards, then we'll come back and we'll address those needs of what we need to do from there.
How about the downtown atmosphere with the type of lights we have down there?
As far as, can you?
Well, these lights are much dimmer than probably the average streetlight down there, and that's because we have storefront lighting and stuff that help and tree lighting and stuff that, you know, if those, they're just a complete different light. They don't have a shade, I don't think, on top to reflect the light down. It's reflected 180, you know, half circle upwards and out.
I can answer that.
Okay, I was going to say.
The intention is, is in addition to the lighting from the, we'll pass out to Walmart, so you can see the highway lighting, is to install one or possibly two. What they are is the globes won't change downtown on the lighting standard, they'll still look the same. It's just going to be a different color of light that's going to come out of it. We want to test those two to make sure they're not so bright that they're overtaking the store lighting or they're so bright that, you know.
Are these like a daylight bulb? You say, you know, when you go in, you go to a different place and look at the bulb displays, they have a soft light, a medium light, and a daylight. It's like the daylight type bulbs. It's almost more natural light than it is a regular light.
That's correct. And the lighting on the streetlights is LED lights, so they're much brighter and wider than what we're typically used to seeing on the streets now. In addition, not to change such a couple of lights, but these particular ones that we have requested come with a 20-year guarantee, I think these lights will last for 20 years. Some of the bulbs, the luminaires we go change now, we may get four years out of them, we may get one. So we have a constant changeover of materials. It doesn't change the fact that every streetlight will still have a photocell on it that tells it when to come on and when to go off, you know, dusk and dawn. However, they're a more robust, I guess, photocell. Nothing's going to stand up to golf and all-size hail, but you know, with the smaller size hail, these will stand up to that better than what our current standards are. So that will help too in also.
Okay, well, I'm all for the safety of the lighter, the brighter lights out in the residential and along the expressways and stuff of that nature, but I'd really like to hold close to my brass that we have some sort of light that is compatible with the downtown atmosphere that we have.
Can I address that? They actually, technology now actually lets us, and Rob, you can comment if you want. Rob's the engineering director for our company. Basically, the lighting cell that we've done in other areas, we actually can direct the light downwards. We actually ran into a project that Rob and I worked on where they had lofts downtown above, and they were concerned about, you know, they wanted the dark sky instead of that. So we can actually, we have loud contingency fund in there with Mike and speaking with him, that if we need to change that technology and have it direct downwards, we can do that. So that will be something that can be part of the sample project if that's concerned, we can address that concern relatively quickly.
I'd like to see that on the sample project along with the others, yes.
Definitely want to clarify, the term brighter is not really the right word. For reason of public safety, likes the lights is their full spectrum. The quality of light gives better color rendition, so if somebody's got a red car parked under an LED streetlight, you see it as a red car. Whereas traditional lights, somebody might look at it and say, it's an orange car. So, public safety tends to like it because it gives them a better quality of light. It's not really a brighter light or has more output, it's simply a different spectrum of light.
All right. If we approve this, I know you talked about getting, setting up testing, you know, in various lighting and stuff, but kind of a timeline on, I didn't really see a timeline in here.
What we would do is, we would do the testing sections first to make sure that everyone, that the commission is comfortable with, and will advise you when they're up to drive by and then let Mr. Allen know they're okay or not okay, once we know that we're going to move forward. And Siemens will start the project, the process of selecting their contractor, ordering the materials, and expect to be done in.
Definitely expect to be done in less than a year, but we think somewhere between, to be conservative, somewhere between eight months and a year. So, and that's on the conservative side. The longest part of this, when you do a lighting project, is actually once you select the lights, it's actually ordering the lights and getting the manufacturer to get you the lights. The installation can go relatively quickly. It's just a matter of getting the material here at Garden City to put it in. So that's going to be our longest lead time in what we do. But we will select contractors that are qualified, that can get the work done as expeditionally as possible, because we have a guarantee behind that. So we need to make sure we meet those expectations.
Mike, I've got a couple of questions on the report. There's a few of these that have pretty extended payback periods. What's the advantage to the city including like the athletic fields? You know, it's only a $14,000 implementation price, but it's projected to have an 81-year payback, which is understandable, because they're not on all the time. Why has the city rolled out into a project like this and not just go out and spend $14,000 and upgrade it if it, if we made that badly?
I'm going to give you my take, and then Rob if he wants to comment. So I'm always asking the engineers, because I'm, you know, I was in business, so I always make sure I say.
At some point in time, I want to hear the opinion of somebody that doesn't have a vested interest.
Then I feel like Rob talking. Standardized lighting is always an important thing when we do these projects, is that way Mike has one technology that he can deal with. One of the things on the lighting field that comes to, that typically comes to, is the operational savings that go into the project. Lot less changing a light bulb because of the technology's longer life. It allows him to, you know, reduce manpower as far as going out and having to change them or fix them or do whatever. So we try to get the standardized, you know, as much standardization as we can for Mike when we do a project like this. And as a matter of fact, we even leave behind some, when we're done with the project, he'll actually give an inventory of those lights in case something would happen in an emergency situation, whenever that he would have the ability to change those immediately. So that's how we kind of look at that, is just trying to do that.
Clint, Leidner, Tebels, Wiley, Fessler, Cleaver? Anything else?
No, I believe that's it. And we did talk about that, Matt, you know, because I questioned the same thing, why we just spent $14,000 bucks to be done with it? Why throw it into this thing? But for one, we get a better, we get a better purchase price for the luminaires, because we're buying all these other things, and that's really what drove it, so I said just leave it in. But certainly.
Does that include the standards at all of those locations to existing standards that we're just changing the bulbs?
These will be the, just the existing standards, we're matching the existing lighting. Some of that's mixed down there, so we'll be matching the existing lighting that prevails. We're not going to change all of the lights out to LED at the ball fields, no.
It's not a lighting redesign, that's, the question is not that. If there are areas in particular, I'm not aware of any coming out of the lighting report, there were areas of concern. I get concerned in areas with a lot of technology. If you're overlit, maybe the retrofit, that, there weren't areas of concern we can.
We're talking about field lights, right?
Not about building lights. Streetlights aren't worried about.
On the athletic.
Like the athletic.
Those are the field lights, right? The ones?
Correct. Kind of like the ones that were, you know, the one that was an issue just today that were figured.
That and the field light, that was a road light up at the zoo. That was like 50 or 100 yards behind the outpost. Pretty sure. Anyway, you answered my question, I appreciate that. Water department, building weatherization, that's, we're weatherizing the building we're living out of?
Yeah, there's very little that's going to be done down there. Well, my visitor was saying, currently asking me to be there since he's planning to move into that facility.
Okay, so.
That's what we'll have to do. Otherwise, we wouldn't have done that. If we were going to land in it, then we wouldn't have done that.
Good one.
At the airport, you know, part of that, there's maybe some modifications there. We did not include the area, the part of the airport where there could be some modifications of the building, just the part that we know is going to stay, mainly from like where you check in to the south, that area.
And the streetlights out there too?
We've already done the street lighting going out, the main road going out there. Parking, I'm intent, did we change all those out there in the parking? Yeah. We will.
Well, okay, that's, okay.
Any other questions? Should you choose not to move forward with this, which is certainly your prerogative, when we, when we agreed to hire Siemens, when the commission authorized Siemens to do the investment grade audit, there's a $25,000 fee with that. Should you approve it, that fee basically goes away as this rolls into the project. If you choose not to move forward with it, then we are obligated to pay them the $25,000 for the audit, but we get the results of the audit. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that as well.
Correct.
Did you say you're not changing the lights at the, some of the lights at the baseball fields?
Some of the lighting for the fields will not change.
Oh, okay.
There's some lights in there that are different, they're a different light than what, we're going to standardize it so that the ones we're going to replace, we're going to match the majority of what's in there. So you don't have a different, three different types of lights at one field. We could have done that, certainly we do, but.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2630-2015.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a very extensive report.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
And I will, they worked, Siemens worked hard on not just coming in and giving a boilerplate efficiency report, because the savings, for example, had to be completely retooled, which I think they addressed, because of the nature of the city of Garden City. We have our own electric utility, and so the savings here is actual savings to our budget, not, well, you'd be saving this hypothetically if you were paying a retail rate for, this is, this is analysis that I believe the commission can take into consideration during your budget and move forward with some confidence. So it's, it was a good report you did.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item 9C, resolution number 2631-2015, if approved, removes motor vehicle nuisances at 2104 North Third, 2005 North Main, and 201 East Emerson.
I may that we approve resolution number 2631-2015.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
He's going to get a third in there. No old business, 11A. The city, the Federal Railroad Administration, and the Kansas Department of Transportation, as well as Burlington Northern Santa Fe are working on all the necessary documentation to get the Tiger Six grant administered. The governing body is asked to consider the first of what will be, I think, maybe two or three different agreements. This one's between the city and KDOT for project administration. And Steve, you want to, or Randy, either one?
This was actually a fun one to work on, because it took a contract from an agency that builds roads and revamped it into something for building a railroad, for upgrading a railroad. So I got to really cut and paste. But anyway, this is the agreement between Kansas Department of Transportation and the city, which basically is our contract with KDOT to let them administer the grant. We are still the recipient of the grant and will be listed as responsible for lots of things in that grant. KDOT is going to handle all of that stuff for us, and hopefully when they say, sign this and send it in, it's kosher. So.
The city council look over it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Randy was.
Okay, was highly involved. What I would suggest is that you approve the agreement, subject to any changes that I need to make to the agreement in the next couple of weeks. I've done that before. What we may do in the future is just adopt a resolution which would authorize the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to complete this project, so that we don't have a lapse of two weeks when we need an agreement signed right away, because they come in sporadically.
But rest assured, this project is not waiting on the city of Garden City.
I'm sure, no.
So, two weeks is a blink, the way this thing's moving forward, so.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the agreement granting the city council the authority to make changes prior to execution, which meet the governing body's intent.
And approve.
And approve the agreement.
The agreement. Thank you.
With the, make any changes prior to execution.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 11B, the governing body is asked to consider. Item eleven B, the governing body's asked to consider the architectural firm for the design of Fire Station One remodel, or Central Fire Station remodel. Staff's recommendation, or the recommendation of the selection committee, which included a governing body member and Steve Kotrell and the fire chief, I believe. Their recommendation is to accept the proposal from Gibson, Mancini, Carmichael, and Nelson. And members of those, that committee will, I'm sure, stand for questions.
Any questions that we can answer for you?
I make a motion we approve Architectural Firm, Gibson, Mancini, Carmichael, and Nelson for the Fire Department remodel project.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
I have no idea what's going on with that. I'm gonna ask the governing body to consider jumping over really quick item C and doing the consent agenda. There is a document that, I'm sure as Randy moves on, he can take care of the real estate agreement. I think Mr. West was interested in filing that today. And that would also allow the city attorney to go ahead and leave the meeting and we'll just finish up with the budget and commissioner's report. That would be good. There's any questions on the consent agenda? We can pull them off. If not, items D one through five, aye.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, items D one through five, aye.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
All right, we're gonna switch some seats here and get ready for the budget. In that time, if we could have the mayor sign the deed, and Randy will take care of it. I'm gonna shut this off because it's distracting.
Just go home.
I have no idea what that's going on.
Sign your name and date.
I'm gonna stay up here with these time.
Yes. Think over. Just put your name and address back there. I'm gonna change. This is the deed, so you just sign the date and then we'll see when we're able to write We will no longer be the owners of the state theater. We didn't receive a check, so.
Almost like an intermission in a play or something. No background music.
Only shorter, hopefully.
For a while anyway.
I'll come back in. I'm gonna have to start, I'm gonna make.
Okay, is everybody ready to get started? Now, if you reviewed this at all during the weekend, a little fairy came in while you guys were at lunch and made some changes, so.
A short one. I'll take the blame for that. I asked Melinda to modify those numbers, so it's my fault, not hers.
See, I had a hiccup. Okay, so May fifth is where we're at. We're starting out with Fund sixty-seven, the capital reserve fund that we're using for the Jameson Energy Project. We're starting out this year with twenty fifteen. We transferred in seven hundred and fifty thousand in twenty fourteen, so we have a cash balance coming in. We anticipate transfers both in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, so that's going to bring that cash balance at the end of twenty sixteen to roughly two point two five billion. So we're getting a good.
This is all planned for recently.
And, you know, we're wanting, we're wanting to keep that growing. That is a forty-two million dollar plant out there, as you all know. And in ten years, it may need some repairs done, so this is the fund that you'd be able to use to make those repairs that will hit your operating budget. So it's a good plan to have going. Okay, then Fund sixty-eight is the electric fund. We started out twenty fifteen with a cash balance of four million, seven eighty, seven eighty-seven. We're looking at revenues in twenty fifteen to be about two and a half percent growth over twenty fourteen. Same way with twenty sixteen, we're looking at some growth there, being very conservative on that. Another large item we have in this line item is the connect fees. Going on down, we have reimbursed developer, you know, with all the developments that we have going on right now, there is some sort of repayment that we get for materials. We also pay sales tax in this fund. We collect it from a utility customer, so then we have to pay it back to the state. So that's the revenue that comes in on our utility bills. So the total income in twenty fifteen, thirty-two million, three ninety-five, two thirteen, and twenty sixteen is thirty-three million, two twenty-nine, seven fifty. So we have total available going into the expenses in twenty fifteen of thirty-seven million, one seventy-six. The biggest part of this budget is our wholesale power and also our additions. This next page is the additions. You've got a lot of construction going on in twenty fifteen. So the next page over, there's an email from Mike that I had him detail out, all of the items that we have going on as far as construction goes. So in this contracted contractors, you can see that listing there for twenty fifteen revised. You've got Jenny Barker Road going on, Spruce and Westport Road, Clarion Estates, Old Chicago, Prairie View Acres, Chapel Heights, and some West Lanes stuff going on. So that's, you know, currently all of the subdivisions that they're having to provide service into to get that, those up and going. Material streetlights, a hundred and seventy-five thousand this year, sixty-five next year. It's going down due to this recent agreement that you just made. This one seventy-five was already a planned expenses. The material distribution in twenty fifteen, if you go back to this memo again, we've got materials in there and it's basically the same subdivisions that we've got going on with the contractors. This is just the material portion of it. Then we see that number go down in twenty sixteen to five fifty-one. That is also detailed on there too. We're gonna have Indian Hills, Labrador Bridge, and Sunrise Edition, Long Street. So those are the bigger construction line items that we have in the electric fund. Going on down, we have substation material. There's gonna be some upgrades going on on a couple of the substations. The store sirens, twenty-four thousand, I think that gets about one siren a year, doesn't it?
That's correct.
New meters, we're always getting new meters every year to keep, keep our meters updated so that they're all reading up to current standards. Let's see here, new equipment office. We've got some construction going on out at the electric department and there's gonna be some additional equipment that's gonna be needed inside the building. GIS acquisition, this is what we pay to the county every year for the GIS services that we have. We split the bill in three of our different funds, so electric pays for it, solid waste, and water. Well, it's roughly seventy-five thousand a year. And then transformers, we have to have those in stock and ready to go in the subdivisions, so four hundred and twenty-two thousand this year, two-ten next year. So that makes the total additions in four eleven at two million, six fifty-three, two fifty in twenty fifteen, and a million, three seventy-five in twenty sixteen. So as you can tell, this is a pretty busy construction year in twenty fifteen. Production, we have three employees in this area, so you can see the salaries there in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. It also has the corresponding employee benefits that go along with those three personnel. When we go on down the line items here, you're gonna see some, you know, regular line items for repair buildings and equipment. Repair substations, this year it's one-ten, drops down to sixty-five thousand in twenty sixteen. Of course, you have your utilities and telephone. The next page is your wholesale power. This is an ever-changing number since we have a different source of power. So if you look back at twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, that was a different source of your wholesale power. Twenty fourteen is the new source, so we're basing all of our projections on wholesale power based on that actual number we have in fourteen. So we're looking at roughly two and a half percent increase in twenty fifteen and then twenty sixteen on that wholesale power. The power supply long-term debt, this is a number that we received from KMEA, and that is the debt schedule that they maintain. We pay them monthly for that debt schedule. The debt is actually in their name, but the asset is going to be transferred to us, and that's going to be the Jameson Energy Center. The forty-two million that you have on the books right now, that's being paid for with this long-term debt.
Correct.
And then JEC, operating costs, we just have some operating expenses in there to keep that plant up and going, you know, all the small items that we need during the year. So then that brings our total production budget in twenty fifteen at twenty-one million, three sixty-five, five hundred. Next year, twenty-one million, seven twenty-five, two fifty. Any questions there? I have included, just for your information, the capital lease obligation that we have with KMEA that agrees to that long-term deadline item. And then we also have an amortization schedule in there on a small loan that we have, that we pay a portion of for KMEA. Those substantiate the long-term debt. Just wanted you to come up for information purposes. Okay, then we get into distribution. We have several employees in this area. Twenty and a half people in this.
Correct.
In this area. So you see the salaries that we have for twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the corresponding benefits for those employees. We did keep, I think I've mentioned this much because we haven't talked about employee benefits, but we did keep the health insurance cost to the city. It was eight-twenty for twenty fifteen. It is the same thing for twenty sixteen. So our premiums came in really good and, and we were happy to be able to keep that even.
There was, there was no increase in the amount of personnel either. There's no, these are no new positions, these are just existing positions.
So you have a part-time warehouse person?
Yeah. Joe Campos, Campus, Campus Campos? I'm not sure how you pronounce his last name.
Okay, then the other expenses in distribution, of course, we have utility locates, repair vehicles, repair transformers, environmental costs. The next page, some of the larger line items, of course, we have utilities, electric in there, gas, oil, and diesel. Safety supplies, that's an important line item in this area, fifty-seven thousand this year, fifty-one next year. And then new equipment, other twenty thousand both years. And that's for just small equipment line items.
Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were waiting for me. Yeah, that's like our pulling equipment for pulling, whether it's underground or overhead cables, some radios, that type of smaller stuff.
So then that brings the distribution budget to one million, eight ninety-nine, eight fifty-five in twenty fifteen. In twenty sixteen, we're looking at a million, nine seventy-two.
On the traffic lights? Why is that zero now?
Hey, I'm gonna talk about that here in a minute, the way we're. That's always been a transfer to the general fund, but we decided to take several of the transfers that we did to the general fund and just make them one line item to make it a lot easier for everybody to understand. We used to transfer salaries and legal expense, so we just decided to go with an overall five percent administrative cost, which is going to be in this area right here. And that included traffic signals.
Correct. That's where it went. I wasn't for sure if that was part of this agreement thing or what.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a good question. But no, it's not part of it.
Okay. Because all of a sudden, I started seeing all this stuff, zero. Actually, the traffic lights, the, the lights on the traffic signals, ninety percent of those are already LED lights behind it. There's a few that we're gonna change, but we didn't even list it on the report.
Okay. And then in four fourteen, commercial, this is where we have our advertising, our association dues, audit expense, our bank and credit card charges, collection fees, all has to do with, you know, the collection of revenue for the electric fund. Contracted utility billing, that's our company that we pay to mail out our utility bill, print it and mail it. We have the insurance on property vehicles and other in this line item. Legal services, you'll see a zero now. Maintenance contracts, just on a few equipment contracts, janitorial service, training and And then when we get down here to transfer office salaries, a million, five fifty-two this year, a million, five ninety-one, two fifty. That is five percent of the total electric fund revenues. And so we're just gonna keep it at that. That'll go to the general fund as a revenue line item to be used for general fund operations. It'll also include the transfer to the golf course and the maintenance of the traffic signals and the legal services. So it takes care of all of those in one line item transfer.
Okay. That's not.
If the utility was a standalone private utility, we would have the expenses of having a building here, having a CEO, et cetera.
Right. And that's just the fee or the fee or expense on.
Yeah, really. The way we did it before, we had several different lines. We just combined it.
Sure, okay.
So that makes the twenty fifteen revised budget for commercial at two million, fifty dollars, and next year, two million, fifty-five, two fifty. In the sundry accounts, the consultant fee this year, two hundred thousand, next year one fifty. We have engineering fees at a hundred and seventy-five thousand both years. Legal services, a hundred thousand both years. We take care of the depot in this area. We may move that to the parks. So you may see that change a little bit, but that's only fifteen thousand, so. Rental agreement is a lot of copiers, any sort of equipment that we have a rental agreement on. We're not transferring to the community trust anymore. That's part of that five percent transfer that we're doing, so we got rid of that. Transfer other funds, this is what we actually call the franchise fee. So it's a million, five fifty-two in twenty fifteen, and a million, five ninety-one, two fifty in twenty sixteen. That goes to the general fund. We're not starting anything on the electric reserve yet. We don't have our cash balance exactly where we want it yet, but when we do, we'll start doing a transfer in for an operating reserve, kind of like we have for water. And then, and that's it on sundries. So that total is four million, nine thousand, fifty, five hundred, and four million, twenty-seven in twenty sixteen. And then we also have some debt in the electric fund that we have through a GO bond, and that in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, you can see the principal and interest. And then recently, you just heard about Siemens project, so we're putting the financing in, starting in twenty sixteen, in the electric fund. And then after this all gets figured out, we will be able to transfer in some money from some other departments to reduce the cost here. There's gonna be some costs from parks and, and other departments that will reimburse this.
General fund.
Yeah. But he'll take care of all the debt. The electric fund will take on, care of all the debt payment. The electric fund will take on, care of all the debt payment and have some reimbursement coming in. So that showed that we had four million four seventy-five carryover from 2015 into 2016. And we're looking at carryover into 2017, as you can see in that last column, five million two ninety-five nine forty-six. We'd like to grow that to a little over seven million to cover two months' expenses. So we're, we're on our way up. So that's a good thing. Anything you want to add on electric?
I don't think so. You know, we'll, we'll be bringing to the commission here in a few weeks, a month, I'll say, some other options on power supply, which actually may be less than what we're currently paying. So everything we're doing is trying to save, you know, the additional savings to those. The only thing that could change in this is if, you know, we have another large development occur that requires us to spend the capital to get it out. But that's why we're, we want to keep those fund balances as high as we can for now because we don't know exactly what's, what's going to come down the path, so. Unless you have any questions of me.
And things are going good with the power supply?
Yeah, things are going very well. We ran Jameson Energy Center on Thursday. We ran two units for about five hours apiece. Eighteen megawatts we generated with our own power instead of buying it from somebody else. We, we, before we had, there was a glitch between the black start unit, and that's what, should there be a, say the whole Kansas went black. You have to have load to be able to start a generator. We have the generator that will create the load, but there was a miscommunication between the turbine and the black start unit. But anyway, we got that fixed and it works just fine. We tested that last week on both, all three units. And so should there be an outage, we'll be able to get those started in a short period of time and power up the community.
Anything else on electric?
So is that the first time this, this year that you've run it?
No, we've ran them a couple of times, mostly for testing purposes. This is the first time we've ran them intentionally, yeah.
For load support.
Yeah. And two of the, the units are, two of the units are registered with SPP, the Southwest Power Pool. So in the event that they want us to run it, we will get a four-hour notice that says, Garden City, we want you to run those turbines today at two o'clock. Then we'll do that. We're obligated to do that. And then we will be compensated for our cost to run them, obviously, plus whatever the market price is. So there's an opportunity that we could create some revenues by that, actually substantial revenue should that occur. Our turbines are cheaper to run than some of the other more traditional units.
Man hasn't requested that yet.
Hopefully though, you know, they usually take some about a year before they start. They want to make sure that they've got all the bugs worked out.
Yeah, it's got to warm up too.
Yeah, when, when it gets hot, of course, then it comes in. Man, you know, last year we ran those units practically every day, at least one unit for a short period of time. So, and then we'll be doing our testing again. We have to do annual testing every year to make sure we meet the, our KDHE's air permit requirements. So far, so good. Happy to report that.
And we can run all three. Where we couldn't run all three there for a while, or any?
True.
For a little bit.
There's some, there were some.
Glitches.
Some restrictions on some other equipment that wouldn't allow us to do that. Those improvements will be completed by September, October, a hundred percent of it, because some of those, some of those improvements need to be completed by Sunflower. It's on their transmission side. Once those are done, then we can run all three of them and push as much power out on the system as we possibly can.
We don't have to move into the Cheyenne Mountains?
No, shouldn't have to. We'll, we'll be good.
We'll see. The next fund is utility deposit, and this is a fund that we just keep track of the customers' utility deposits that they have on their accounts. It's really not any money that the city can spend. We do refund those deposits on their final bill or, and if they have money left over from their deposit, we'll issue them a check. We're budgeting, we have four hundred and sixty-seven thousand four seventy-three in cash coming into the year. We're estimating three fourteen, three hundred and fourteen coming in for revenue, three hundred thousand out, estimate four hundred and eighty-two being carried over, bringing in three hundred and twenty thousand next year. I budgeted the full fund. We won't spend the eight oh two, but I'm just budgeting the four out. So that's that one. Okay, water and sewer, coming into 2015, we have two million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand nine fifty-three. We have collections for water and sewer coming in. 2015 is two million six sixty. 2016 is two million seven hundred. Collections on water, 2015 is four million five hundred, and then four million five fifty in 2016. There's also connect fees that get recorded in this fund. We have county sewer fees that we receive, a hundred and twelve thousand this year and next year. Fire leg fees, fifteen thousand roughly each year. Penalties on the utility bill are a little over a hundred thousand in fifteen, one ten in sixteen. That's a five percent penalty that we have on there. Reimburse developer, that's kind of the same as in the electric fund, paying us back for materials. We also have a sale of material, sewer tank fees, a hundred and thirty-five thousand both years. Water tank sales, fifty-five thousand both years. Water tap fees, sixty-five thousand both years. Then we do have a tax on water consumption that we collect and pay to the state, sixty-five thousand both years. And then there's a transfer that we make every year from the water system maintenance reserve. That's fund number eighty-two, that's a hundred and fifty thousand. And wastewater repair replacement, two hundred and seventy-five this year, a hundred thousand next year. That's to pay for expenses that usually come out of the additions in three eleven here. In 2015, in the additions, of course, we always have street repair because when we tear up a street, we need to repair it, twenty-five thousand both years on that. Material mains, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand and seven hundred and fifty next year. We do have, on the next page, you'll see the items that are scheduled for main replacement. If you want to talk about those, that would be good.
Excuse me. And Fred is here also, if I mess it up. The major expenses that we anticipate, one is the Lyle Street water main improvements. Hopefully that will, we'll be ready to bid that out in about thirty days. And then that construction will start later this fall. Seventh Street is about thirty-six thousand dollars. In their water master plan, we had some control valve work. If you remember, we're, we're connecting the high zone and the low zone together to create more pressure on the east side of town. That's about forty-five thousand dollars. We have the, we spent about eight thousand dollars down at Commerce Bank. We're going to spend about a hundred thousand dollars on cleaning this year, water line cleaning. We're going to continue with that. And Fred actually has another option. He had just a quick second to talk about another thing that we're going to attempt to try this year that may get us away from some of the, well, go ahead, Brad.
Yeah. And, and the fee on, the budget item on Seventh Street is, is to complete the engineering for that project so we can, so we can form that line replacement in 2016. The other thing we're looking at, we've been spending a little over a hundred thousand dollars for the last couple of years on doing line cleanout projects where we're actually opening up the water lines and, and running a swab down them to clean out the tuberculation. We're also looking at some treatment of the water, especially in our Dakota wells, to sequester the iron content in them. Basically, that's done with a polyphosphate. It's very common water treatment throughout the nation. When that is, when that is added to the water, that keeps the chlorine from oxidating the iron content, and that reduces the amount of discolored water that can occur. So that's one thing we're looking at. We're also looking at using that same chemical, and this is as preliminary as this morning, I actually just came from, from meeting with one of the representatives. We've taken samples from various locations around town, and, and the same thing that can be used to sequester that red water appearance can also be used to reduce the amount of that tuberculation buildup in the cast iron piping. Over, you know, a couple of years, you don't want to do anything rapidly, that we can maybe start impacting that tuberculation issue that we have in our older piping around town and combine that with water main replacement and water main cleaning to get this older part of town tackled. Half of our water distribution system is cast iron, so seventy-five miles of water main. If there's anything we can do to increase the efficiency of getting those lines cleaned out and providing good product to the customers, we need to do that more than just the method of replacing it because replacing that much line would be very cost prohibitive. We'll have more information on that as we continue to work through it.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes care of material mains. Material water service, one seventy-five both years. That's just a kind of a normal expense that we have in this area. Sewer mains, twenty-five thousand both years. Material lift station, two forty-five this year, and then it goes back down to five thousand. Would you happen to know where that lift station is? Are we building a new one?
I, I'm constructed from Mary Street.
Okay.
Mary and Boots Road.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay. And then equipment replacement at the treatment plant, forty-five thousand both years. And then we're constantly getting new meters in the water department, a hundred and fifty thousand this year, one thirty next year. And then they also have the GIS expense. So three eleven additions total, one million four sixty-nine in fifteen and a million one eighty-one, seven fifty in sixteen. Then there's a little bit of detail here that we have to go along with your information that you just heard from Mike and Brett. Sewer maintenance has five employees in it. So you have the total salaries and the benefits to go along with that. And those are just pretty much normal expenses when you come down into the expenses for sewer maintenance. Total of one forty-two for fifteen, one fifty-two for sixteen. This total area of the budget, three fifty-seven, two fifty, and then four oh nine, five hundred and sixteen. Sewage plant, three thirteen. It has eight and a half employees. So you have the total salaries there and the total benefits for those employees. Contracted services for bio solids, as you can see, is a hundred and sixty thousand both years. That's one of the larger expenses in this area. Labs, lab testing, eighteen thousand both years. Repair equipment, a hundred thousand both years. As you know, the plant is aging and it does need that kind of funding for equipment. Repair grounds, eighty-five thousand seven fifty this year. What that entails is on the next page, it's got the airport lagoon at eighty-five thousand in there. And then repair SCADA, one thirty-seven five this year. That's SCADA development, fifteen, a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is for the new development of the SCADA system. The next page, we have one of the larger items, of course, is always the electric of the plant, three hundred thousand both years. Chemicals, fifty thousand this year, fifty-five next year. And just some small equipment in the office and for the plants. So water, a million six oh three in fifteen and sixteen. Repair material, one twenty-four seven fifty in fifteen, two hundred thousand next year. And utilities, electric, three hundred and seventy thousand both years. The next page has a few of the smaller expenses. New equipment, other is a pickup with a Tommy lift in sixteen, thirty thousand dollars there. So the total for production, two million three ninety-five five hundred in fifteen, two million five fifty-one five hundred and sixteen. Distribution has ten employees in this area. Salaries and benefits for those. Down in the other expenses, pretty much all normal expenses there to go along in the distribution.
Are we going to add something to the water tower? Is this water tower material?
Twenty thousand both years. That's pretty much just maintenance.
We do have in the capital side before in some of those expenditures, should we be able to get, move that far is to paint main in Kansas, water tower. And then in 2016, we're looking at the above-ground storage over on East Kansas.
And then the next page, the new equipment, eighty thousand in 2016 is for a new duct prep. So 2015, the total expenses is seven ninety-five five fifty. 2016 is nine hundred and thirteen thousand. In the commercial area of water, this is a lot like electric, we made some changes in here. They do have advertising, audit expense, insurance. And then when we come down to transfer administrative costs, that's five percent of the total revenues in sewer and water. And that does go to the general fund. So the total expenses in commercial is five twenty-one, one forty in fifteen and five fourteen, three hundred and sixteen. In the sundry area, you have your engineering costs, any sort of legal services, refunding any customer accounts. Water use fee, that, that's the amount that we pay to the state. And transfer other funds, that's actually your franchise fee portion that goes to the general fund for water and sewer. Total sundry is six eighty-seven, two eighty-four in fifteen and five ninety-six, two fifty in sixteen. Okay, debt service, fifteen and sixteen. And you can see the principal and interest that we have on our current debt. And I think that you do have those debt schedules that we presented to you in the first part of your book, so those, those amounts do agree with that. At the end of fifteen, we are carrying over roughly a hundred, a million four seventy-three into 2016. We're projecting if we carry out all these expenses in 2016 as planned, that your cash carryover is a hundred and eighty-five thousand seven eighty-four, which we need to work on that.
Yep.
But that shows you really around, if you, if you do spend all of your line items and get all of your projects done. Any questions on the operating portion of water and sewer? These last two are just your reserve funds. We transfer five percent of the revenues that are in sewer into Fund eighty-one, and then we, as needed, we transfer that money for operations back into Fund eighty. But we have a little reserve fund here created that has three hundred and seventeen thousand coming into fifteen and a hundred and seventy-eight thousand coming into sixteen. It's always nice to have that money to come back on, you know, when you need to spend on something. And then the water maintenance reserve, three hundred and seventy-two thousand cash coming into fifteen. We're projecting four fifty-three, and we're hoping to have a carryover of five thirty-five going into 2017. That takes care of this set of utility funds. Is there any questions that we can take care of on these today? Next go-around, you're going to have solid waste and golf course. We're going to finish up the rest of the enterprise funds, and then the whole month of June, you get to play around with the tax incentives.
Rimming.
Anyway, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hope I'm not taking all your stuff there, Matt. There you go.
Mayor and commissioners, I believe with that, we've completed the agenda with the exception of the commissioner reports.
Commissioner Law, would you like to go first?
Just have one thing really. I had contact over the weekend about cemetery grounds not being quite up as far as this person was concerned, and I think it was just dry and which.
It's taken care of.
As it turns out, last night, today, and maybe tomorrow again, there was certainly help from that. I think there was some warm season grasses that hadn't come around yet, and they just wanted to know if we'd had some kind of change in operations maintenance. Matt and Kelly, you know, nothing has really changed, just, you know, the way it is. And other than Kelly's been dealing and the crew have been dealing with some irrigation system issues, recent and ongoing where they're making some repairs and don't have the water coming up that they'd like to in between the rains. So, they're working on that, get that there, and then, I think it'll be up to everybody's standard if it's not already, so.
Mr. Sessa?
Just like to congratulate the, everyone on the Citizens Academy, and hopefully, they got some good out of it and learned something that, on how the city operates behind the scenes and everything. It was real good when I went through it. I mean, it really gives me the perspective, you know, when we're talking about the departments of really what's going on. So, I encourage all citizens to really take advantage of that. You know, a lot of communities don't have that type of educational opportunity to actually get behind the scenes and see what's going on in your community. So, when the sign-up does come back around, please sign up. The community spring cleanup seemed to go pretty well. I did, I kind of noticed that there wasn't as much. It was kind of surprising that, you know, from the report, what I saw, which there, I didn't think there was as much material out, but maybe I wasn't in the right part of the town. Good sales tax receipts, as always. We seem to be continuing to, you know, collect more sales tax receipts as we move forward. So, that's, that's always nice. And then, we're moving forward on the, on the Tiger Grant, and that, that really helps with our trimodal system of transportation for our economic development in our community. That's all I got.
Mr. Dale?
Okay. I'll, I'll ditto what Mr. Sessman said about, just about everything, and I'll comment separately on, on the Garden City Academy class. I encourage everybody out there, if they can't hear me, they'll read it in the paper. But.
You've got a lot of confidence.
I want to put some pressure on you.
Scott's best spokesperson, man.
It's subliminal messaging.
Yeah. But, you know, if, if there's people out there in, in the community that want to get involved in the community, the Citizens Academy is certainly a great place to get started to see how we operate, even if you don't want to be other than just to find out. But it's still a good place for young people and even old people to go and attend. The second thing would be the, the CIP thing that starts every fall. That's what we use as a, as a guideline to determine some of the major projects that we're going to do today, tomorrow, and into the future. And those people that want to be involved and maybe become a commissioner someday to, to get on to that and be part of that each year and help with the growth and decisions of what we make. We take those as all recommendations from them and great guidelines. So, those people that will want to become more involved in the future, I recommend that you get on both of those and really get involved. And you will certainly enjoy them. I, I've enjoyed both of those, and they make, they make you really feel friendly and feel like you're really part of the community. Other than that, we've had a great day in our community with not only the commission meeting, the staff supporting the, us and bringing the budget to us, and, and thank God for the rain.
Yes. Yes. And as far, and the Citizens Academy, something I wanted to add to your guys' comments is that also, I hope that it inspires people to maybe feel inclined to join advisory board and, and express their opinions and, and their voice can be heard, so. And I wanted to comment about the planning department, Caleb, giving the housing assessment study that we had this morning and finding that we truly do need a lot more homes. We're up to about 96 units per year that we're going to need if we continue on our trajectory. So, it was very enlightening, and I think we'll be able to use this guide for a lot of different ways. That's all I have. So, there's nothing else. I'll call this meeting adjourned.